Good evening, planning board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a discussion item. 144 and 154 Turnpike Road, site plan non-compliance. I'll ask the, actually this wound up on the agenda as a result of a neighbor contacting me about a situation between the two properties that seemed to be in non-compliance with the site plan approval. So we notified, I notified the town planner and she in turn shared the concern with the rest of the board members who have visited the site and verified that there appears to be a non-compliance between the two properties. So I asked the town planner to give us some more detail on what the non-compliance is and what actions we've taken so far. Karina.
Okay, as Dawn mentioned, we got some information. So I took a drive by the property of White's Corner, 144 and 154 Turnpike Road and there appears to be a connection between the two properties. The parking lots made of pavers, looks relatively recent. So I went to the assessor's information and got the property owners. I looked up information on the prior approvals for both of those properties and what I found is under number 144 Turnpike Road, on June 7th in 1996, under a site plan approval condition, there was a vote to approve made with the following condition. There will be no access of any type from the site onto Breakneck Hill Road. Revised plans reflecting this revision to the above referenced plans should be submitted within 20 days expiration of the appeal period of this approval. So back in 96, there's a condition that says no access from 144. So if you're looking at White's Corner, 154 is immediately in the corner between Breakneck Hill Road and Route 9. That's 154. To the east of that property is 144, it's a larger building. It's an office building, correct? And it's the connection between those two buildings. So the both properties are under an LLC for each of the addresses, but ultimately the manager for the LLCs is Mr. De Petri. So I drafted a letter to the property owner indicating that it appears that this connection is in non-compliance and that they should contact us as soon as possible to tell us why and how they came about installing this. I received a response back from the property owner relatively quickly that unfortunately he couldn't make this evening because he's out of town and that he asked if he could be rescheduled for mid-January to discuss the information, to provide some feedback to the board. Following that, I drafted an email and sent information to the building department, to the building inspector, who's the code enforcement officer, with some plans and the approvals to let him know that this had occurred and I'm currently waiting for feedback from that department. And they are currently in transition with a interim building inspector, so it'll probably give, he'll need some time to get up to speed on what I sent him, all the information, until the new building inspector, I believe, starts in January. And I did offer that I would go meet with the building inspector to explain what's going on there in case he's not familiar with that area, so.
So the concern about this connector, it doesn't just connect to 150, 144. It allows all of the cars in the next, is it four, office buildings to access onto Breakneck Hill Road, which then would allow the vehicles to avoid Route 9 and use the neighborhood roads to go south and, and west. Three additional, in addition to 144, the traffic from 136 and two other office buildings would be able to access Mount Vickery Road and Breakneck Hill Road and if, and I was on the planning board at the time that these approvals were done and I remember the neighbors being greatly concerned about that connector and the cars being able to go through the neighborhood and that's why that condition was placed there. So we'll see what happens. I'll open up to the board. Mr. Mills, any questions or comments?
No, I did, I did go and observe a steady stream of vehicles making that exit from the office building into the White's Corner, the old White's Corner, through that connection over to Breakneck, and every single car made the left. So I, I would be very curious as to why that was made, also just wondering for that, for 154, Karina, do we know, because it looks like at least three spots were taken away by doing that? Does that, yeah, the parking spots, does that now not make that in compliance with the number of spots that they needed? So, not that you need an answer for that now, but...
No, it could possibly be, but it looks like about three spaces in that corner, roughly.
And even when I saw the turns being made, it didn't even look like if it was legal, that it should have been wider because one of the trucks that went by nearly clipped the car that was parked right next to the, the turning spot within 154. So looking forward to hearing the answer, the reasoning for that and why it didn't come before us for that approval.
Mr. Jenks?
It, it seems to me that if the property owner were here looking for an okay to put that connector in there, we would say, get us a traffic study and tell, let us see how many cars would be taking a left at the end of that driveway on Breakneck, or how many would be going out to Route 9 and then taking a left to head west, which would be a big savings for people now who have to exit out to Route 9 east of the traffic light, go down, turn around somewhere and come back. And this could present a unique opportunity to find out how many would do that if we had a way of getting somebody out to count cars, get some scout looking for a project or just somebody who might be able to, to count. We'd have a pretty good idea of whether that is the problem that might have been projected when the last of those buildings was put up. I, I'm guessing that it's a lot more traffic than would have been projected when they were building the buildings, but this may be an opportunity to get some real data. Other than that, I have no comments. We're meeting with the developers at the next meeting?
No, he said he's not available until the middle of January, but what the town planner has done is brought this to the attention of the, the code enforcement officer and if, if he believes it's within his authority and there's enough information, he could order that it be closed until it's properly approved. It's something that is outside of our jurisdiction as far as closing it.
Right.
In the meantime, and then I guess the, the proper way to make it permanent would be to submit a modification to, to the approved site plan and have it go through the public hearing process and then make it formal so that it's safe and it's, it's legal.
Do we have a code enforcement officer in place?
Right now, we have an interim person from another town who's helping out Monday and Wednesdays, part-time and some other few hours. So I, I, his name is Neil Hall and I emailed him today with all this information explaining that, you know, we're hoping that this could, you know, this could possibly lead to a modification of the approved site plan if they wanted to leave it that way and prove that it's not a detriment to the neighborhood. Oh, the new building inspector will be there in January 3rd. So when she starts, we'll get her up to speed on our concern for this problem and by then it'll be closer to the time when Mr. De Petri's back in town so he can answer to, you know, why they did that.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Well, clearly it's a violation of the, the conditions of approval, the first one says there shall be no access of any type from the site onto Breakneck Hill Road. So I think with the, it brought to the attention of the code enforcement officer is the right, right step in that, just my opinion, that road, Breakneck Hill cannot afford additional traffic. That's my hood and I don't drive on that road if it's raining or if it's dark or if there's a chance I'll meet a bus or it's a tough road. So thank you, Karina.
You're welcome.
And thanks to the neighbor who brought it to my attention and, and we were able to start this process. If there's, is there anything, anything more, anyone, anyone from the public interested in comments, questions? Have to get in line.
We did have a nice picture, but we have a little technical difficulty.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, master plan update. I'll have the town planner start us off with this discussion.
Okay, at a prior meeting, when this was on the agenda, the planning board had tasked, well, had voted that Mimi Luttrell was the volunteer, planning board member to reach out to other boards and commissions by preparing an email. So we received a draft email that Mimi's been working on with Pam. So Pam is spearheading this project with Mimi for our department and we've already come up with a couple of items like lists of groups that should be contacted to be involved, which Mimi used to develop a list of people to send this to, or a list of groups, I should say, some strategies for getting the word out there, one of them being that Mimi would reach out to these groups. Also, in your package, Pam Rivera, my assistant, prepared a document that addresses some of the tasks from the last meeting, which were to kind of come up with a charge, timeframe, you know, number, who should be, number of people to be on this new steering committee for this update. We still have to work out 100% what it should be called, is it the master plan update committee? Is it the working group? Pam did some research and spoke with the town clerk about establishing this master plan committee, update committee. It will be under the planning board's jurisdiction, so the board of selectmen are involved as members of the committee per se, but really the planning board would vote to move on action for the update. Pam, is there anything you want to add? Just turn on your mic if you want to.
No, you've pretty much covered it. So what I did was I just took out from Mimi's email with the memo that you had sent and just constructed it in a, in a form of a charge as opposed to a, a letter and basically just identifying from the list of committees that we had spoken about in past meetings and then in terms of talking to the town clerk, just making sure that the open meeting law and all of those other aspects are being handled as a result of establishing the committee.
And I'd also like to just go ahead and read, is it all right to read the draft email, Mimi, so that it can, people can hear it and start gaining interest?
Is, is reading that, would it be better to read what Pam put together? Would that accomplish reading the email too?
Oh, the document that Pam put together is a little bit more detailed. It's more of a reading document. I can read both?
Yeah, why don't we read both?
Okay, we'll read them in order as how we got them. So on November 26th, we have a master plan committee introduction letter that will be forwarded to the various groups that are defined in this email, but we've also added some with comments. So it says, hello, the planning board is about to embark upon updating the current master plan, which was completed in 2008. A master plan provides a basis for future decision-making in the town. A long-term vision document, a master plan helps guide the town's growth and change, preserve its natural and cultural resources and maintain its public facilities and services. To create a vision document that represents the community, the planning board is establishing a steering committee of various stakeholders, representing a diversity of ideas and viewpoints. I'm writing to you as a contact for one of the following, I am writing to you as a contact for one of the following stakeholders. Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, Open Space Preservation Commission, Recreation Commission, SHOPC, School Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. Please confirm your organization's participation in the steering committee by forwarding the name of your organization's representative who will be participating. Thank you in advance for your participation in shaping Southborough's future. And I'd just like to add that in correspondence with Pam and Mimi, I've been copied, I see the stuff going by me, I know that maybe there's developers that should be included, possibly representatives from the villages, Southville, Fayville, Corderville and Southborough, right, the four villages. Yeah.
If we can figure out how to contact, like I, so those groups I knew how to contact and I know we, short of just sending emails to the representatives who represented the villages at the last master plan, I don't know if there are really organizations that represent the villages.
Yeah, and I believe there were only two that I saw in, in the old list from one of the villages. I don't think all the villages had somebody involved based on the credits that were given there.
Yeah. And just in terms of developers, we'd have to make sure that, that they're in town as well, so.
Yeah.
That they're not from the, they don't live in another town.
Yep, that's a good point. So since Pam prepared this other document, it'd probably be good if she read it, so, because you know your enunciations where you want to put emphasis.
Okay. So master plan committee. The planning board is preparing to update the ma, the current master plan, which was completed in 2008. A master plan provides a basis for future decision-making in the town. A long-term vision document, a master plan, helps guide the town's growth and change, preserve its natural and cultural resources and maintain its public facilities and services. To create a vision document that represents the community, the planning board is establishing a steering committee of various stakeholders, representing a diversity of ideas and viewpoints, as was in Mimi's letter, just so you know that that was taken directly out of there. The charge of duties. The committee will review the current master plan and make recommendations for revisions, changes and updates. The master plan committee will work with the town planner, staff, boards, commissions, consultants, regional agencies and the citizens of Southborough to formulate revisions, recommendations and drafts of a new master plan to update and replace the 2008 master plan. The master plan committee will ensure that the master, the new master plan will be in conformance with the mass general laws and represent any other topics and issues specific to the needs of Southborough. Over the course of its work, the master plan committee will ensure that the master plan remains a tool to guide the town's growth and change, preserve its natural and cultural resources and maintain its public facilities and services. Membership. The master plan committee shall consist of 17 members. Now this again is a draft, it doesn't have to be this amount, but, two planning board members appointed by the planning board, two members of the board of selectmen appointed, appointed by the board of selectmen, one represented, one representative recommended by the historical commission, one representative recommended by the conservation commission, one by the council of aging, one by the recreation department, one representative recommended by the open space preservation commission, one representative recommended by the EDC, one representative recommended by the SHOPC and one representative recommended by the school committee, one representative recommended by the zoning board of appeals, four members at large appointed by the planning board. Terms of the, and organization. The master plan committee shall dissolve after the planning board's adoption of the revised master plan. The committee shall elect its own chair, vice chair and clerk and shall establish a regular meeting schedule. All records of the committee shall be filed with the town clerk and open to public inspection in accordance with the applicable open meeting law and public record statutes. The committee shall operate in accordance with the state conflict of interest laws. The members shall serve without financial compensation for the planning board, whoever decides to sign it.
Any questions? Mr. Mills?
Thanks Pam. First of all, thank you, Mimi. Thank you, Pam. I know this is, this is a big task overall. I would say for the membership piece though, just a little fine tuning, I could think of, like myself, if I was on it, I could represent both the planning board and CPC and I know there's others that could represent, you know, other boards at the same time that could double dip. So I don't know if we want to, you know, flat out state 17 members, more somehow make it more broadly that we want...
That's a good suggestion.
A diverse group that will fit, you know, have at least membership.
Representation from, yes, okay.
Because I wouldn't want to be hogtied to, you know, 17 members and be like, all right, I...
Yeah, that's hard.
That's all.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it looks great.
Mr. Jenks?
Would it make sense to start the process by looking at the existing master plan and making a determination as to what parts really need to be updated and not just going into it with a mandate to write a whole new master plan?
I think we talked about this over the last couple of meetings and you're right, Phil, there's no mandate to rewrite it, any more than there was when we created the ZAC. There was no mandate to rezone, to rewrite the zoning. It was a review to see to what extent changes needed to be made. So I, I, the town planner and I have talked about this before, that if, once this committee is formed and asked to read the current master plan and then they huddle and say, it's, it's still, it's still fresh, it's still valid, all we got to do is change the date from 2008 to 2000 and probably 19 now and that's it, we're all done. That would be the bare minimum, but I agree that it's, it's not a mandate to change it, it's a mandate to review it and, and make it fresh for the, the time that we're in. And it could result in a massive change in direction for the town's master plan, have us become a city, have us have a mayor.
All right, enough, enough.
Are you running?
Yeah, I'm running.
Is that kept Mr. Jenks off the mic? Mrs. Luttrell?
So that answered one of my questions, that the steering committee or master plan committee or what, will review it before, because I, in the, all the information that was sent by Karina and Pam, I was looking at emails from Vera and the RFP, which was for $64,000 for the... at emails from there and the RFP, which was for sixty-four thousand dollars for the last one, and I think we have, what, seven now? So, at some point, we'll have to, if we're going to do the whole thing over again, that we'll have to ask at town meeting, I guess.
Right. I think the timeframe between, I think it went from like, uh, nineteen eighty-six was an update, and then the two thousand and eight. So the town changed enormously, uh, between, in those twenty years. You know, more schools were built, um, population probably almost doubled. And, um, so the nineteen eighty-six master plan, if I remember right, talked about open meadows and farms and things like that, most of which were gone by two thousand and eight. So it was a big change between those two. But between two thousand and eight and now, it's far, the town has changed, but not as drastically as over those twenty, those previous twenty years. So you're probably right, we can, it, it could be done almost completely in-house, or it could involve, depends where the process takes us.
And I just want to add, because we keep reiterating the same thing, which is good, because the whole idea is get a group together to brainstorm, to see what level of efforts needed. So with you and Pam kind of spearheading that, getting that group together, um, that will then follow the next step once the brainstorming happens. How much has to be, because then we'll get a lot of historical feedback from people who may have knowledge of the old master plan and the goals and the strategies and how they, and living here, having seen how things have changed, and where they hear they want the town to go, versus just, you know, someone in an office determining, this is what I think, and, you know, interpreting someone else's ideas.
So I, I think tonight that we need to establish that, uh, committee. Is that?
Yeah, and Pam, maybe you can talk more to this, because you spoke with Jim Hegarty about the process of, um, you know, establishing the committee, and if that should happen first before this email goes out, what do you, what did you find?
Yeah, so he said that we should establish a committee and then get the volunteers, um, to rep, to represent the, the different-
Categories.
Yeah.
So-
They'd have to be a vote sworn in and the whole thing, yeah.
So this two-page, um, document that you read entitled Master Plan Committee is consistent with what town, the town clerk said we, we should do?
Correct.
So the thing, and then it's, it, it has a signature block for the chairman, um, to, establish this committee, but the board would have to vote, um, and then our minutes would reflect that a motion was made, a vote was taken to establish this committee, and my signature would verify that this, on this document, would verify what the charges, uh, and the duties are, what the membership would be, and how it would, um, how long it would last, and how it would be, um, and then that it would be terminated at a certain point in the process. Correct? Open it up to the public. Tim?
Tim Lit, one forty-eight Woodland Road. Um, I just wanted to, um, remind you that, um, the Technology Committee is also chartered to produce a five-year strategic plan for the use of technology in the town. And I think it would be good if that planning reflected the vision that came out of the master plan, and the master plan was consistent with what those folks come up with. So I'd encourage you to include them in, uh, your committee. I would also, um, I also agree that you probably don't want to fix a number at this point until you understand what the interest is and how you can optimize it, because if it gets to be too big, it will be unworkable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chris?
Hi, Chris Robbins, thirty-nine Parkerville Road. I think it's commendable we're doing this, it's important. I think the key thing is, what are the lessons, what, is anybody explain why we're doing it? I mean, there's an obvious reason, maybe there are just some, what, what is the compelling reason that brought this forward? Why are we doing it? Because there've been a lot of references to the master plan, and there's, it's my impression that it hasn't really been enforced or led by the Board of Selectmen as a guideline for getting things done in a very specific way, so we can measure what's been accomplished. So has anybody reviewed what has been accomplished with this plan? What have we achieved? What have been the positive benefits? And then how are we gonna, if we do this, how are we gonna hold anybody accountable once we do it? And who's gonna have that responsibility? So the, the value of this is gonna be rewarding as opposed to the, and this is normal, when nice reports like this are done. I've seen so many of them sit on a desk. So can anybody answer those questions? What did we learn from the first experience that we're gonna do differently this time? Is anybody gonna be held accountable for, uh, the implementation of it? Who's gonna be the person that'll hold us accountable? And why now? So, uh, maybe those questions have been answered, and I, I just haven't been a part of it, so. And what's the budget? So, does anybody?
We have all your questions. We have some of the answers. Um, uh, the town planner has the Massachusetts General Law here that, that outlines the requirements for the master plans, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one D. So people are welcome to look at that. We've been, uh, over the years, been told, uh, that the master plan requires updating, it's a state, I think it's a state recommendation, uh, every ten years. Because as you said, they're created and then they sit on the shelf, and the older they get, the less applicable they are, and the less looked at they are, and then it turns into a joke. So, um, the specific answers to your questions we'll have at the, at our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, because I, I do think this is a high-value initiative, but I, I think, uh, I think the accountability and who's gonna be the leader that's gonna follow this from the day we bless this thing. And, uh, it's important for the town to always do this and reflect on our, our success or failure from what hasn't been accomplished, and, uh, what can we do differently that's gonna make this effort worthwhile? Well, well done, and I look forward to supporting your effort here.
Thank you. I just want to add to that, Chris, that, um, um, having attended the informational breakfast that the EDC held a few weeks ago, um, that Claire Reynolds and Julie and everybody kind of coordinated, um, I got some valuable feedback at that meeting, um, from some of the people who attended, developers and such. And there's a variety of opinion on, um, what has been accomplished, from some things to nothing, you know, there's always a, 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 various public opinion from various entities. Um, so I think some of the questions you have, um, will come out of the steering committee kind of brainstorming before any real action takes place on what to do, um, before determining the level of effort that's gonna be required, whether it's going to be this full-force, full-fledged new document, or if it's something partial, or if it's something very minimal to work off what's already been established, if the baselines haven't changed yet. So if the, if the existing master plan, um, has all these goals in it that are still valuable to be accomplished, we could work off that, and it wouldn't be such a big effort to rewrite something where you have to have all the studies done and determine, you know, where we are now, if things haven't changed a lot. So I think when the steering committee, the working group gets established, and we have the members with the knowledge and the feedback that we can use, um, that's the time when we can flush some of that out. But as far as the, um, you know, like regulations of why and such, um, I've been looking under the Mass General Law, particularly for that information, and I'm still doing that research, but there appears to be like the Housing Production Plan, that the town gets certain benefits for applying for grants and things like that, and there's other initiatives that if you keep those programs up to date and within a certain timeframe updated, you can tap into some of the benefits that the state offers, and grants in various groups. So we're working on figuring those out, um, and just getting a good handle of that master plan, um, what it means, um, where it can go, and what level of effort. So I appreciate all the, the input, and it's helpful because it helps us look, know where we have to look. So thanks. Sorry, so long.
Mr. Mills?
And also, Mr. Robbins, I think, you know, that the plan itself is a guideline or a tool to be used for, um, a future vision for the town. It doesn't become the law of the town, or what, how the town is to be developed or not developed going forward. It's, it's a tool used by many groups for what the community wants to see going forward. So the responsibility of who uses it, I mean, varies dramatically. There are lots of times when we come back, or when we see a project, we see, how does this fit in with the master plan? I know on the CPC, we ask that question a lot to applicants who are looking to do a project, say, hey, does it fit in the master plan, or what kind of community support do you have, things like that? So I, I don't, I don't think, if you're looking for, say, an owner to drive this and, you know, make sure that everyone's following the master plan, that's not, um, my view of how it's intended.
Ms. Luttrell?
Thank you. Um, just a, couple of the, the major things that were accomplished from the master plan. One was the Public Safety Building, which is being constructed now, that was one of the goals of the plan. Another one was the establishment of the Economic Development Committee, that was one of the goals of the plan. So although there are lots and lots and lots of things that were goals of the plan, and not every single one of them were accomplished, there were some big things that were accomplished, and a lot of little things that are ongoing, like delineating wetlands and updating the GIS, and, um, those things have been ongoing.
Julie, did you want to go? Tim's already talked.
Hi, Julie Connolly, twenty-six Oak Hill. Um, I just wanted to follow up, um, this is great, I'm glad that the master plan's being revisited, and, and I apologize, I got here a little bit later than I planned, but, um, so I'm sorry if this was addressed, but I just wanted to speak specifically to the, to the ZAC, and Mimi was at our meeting, um, our EDC meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we had talked about potentially working with the planning board or setting up a, a subcommittee or a group, um, with some members from the planning board and some members of the EDC on a very, very narrow issue, um, having to do with the ZAC, the, the zoning, um, for the downtown area specifically, and not even including all of the Business Village District, but just specifically the one here on Main Street, um, and taking the recommendations of the ZAC, um, and reviewing them as sort of a, a, a one-off, um, piece that we could get done hopefully, you know, in the short term, that would be, um, a big accomplishment and further some of the goals of the master plan. Um, my understanding, and it obviously wasn't part of the ZAC, but that, that piece of it was fairly non-controversial, and so we talked about maybe just reviewing that piece of it, um, and, and doing that, and obviously I would, I'd, I'd love the idea of, you know, seeing what else in the master plan, um, could be used and apply going forward, but I just wanted to see if that was specifically addressed, if this is something that we're still, um, interested in doing. It's certainly something that the EDC would love to see, and would love to work with you to, to work on that, and my, I think my concern being that if we do it all together and do a full review, which I also fully support, this is gonna get lost in the shuffle, and I'd love to see this, what I see is an easy win for all of us and for the town, um, something that wasn't controversial. Um, I, I just don't want that to get lost in the mire of a much, much grander project, although I do support the grander project as well.
So does this mean that, uh, we only have sixteen more members to, uh, pick?
For the steering committee, for the master plan.
He's asking if he just volunteered.
This was, this was, uh, this was read, and, and it, we're gonna fix this, but it says that it shall consist of seventeen members, but after you just spoke, I think we have member one.
Don, you know, you know, I'm always, uh, always, uh, willing to chip in, so, um, you know, I, I would definitely consider joining if, uh, if the selectmen would have me.
Excellent. Sixteen to go.
Don't tell my husband. He's in the middle of bedtime, he won't know.
Now, don't leave, because, uh, we're still on the second discussion item on the agenda. The next discussion item is the EDC proposed.
Okay, I apologize, I wasn't sure where I came in, so I'm sorry for that.
But no, you transitioned nicely in, in and out.
Okay, great, I love, love to move it along.
Very good.
Okay.
Tim, did you-
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanted, I, I thought I'd add that I think it's important, you know, when one does a plan, that the plan be implementable, or at least you have some idea of, of who might do things. So I would suggest, including in the charge, that, you know, you know, I don't think I go quite so far as, as enforcement, but, but you certainly ought to have a plan that says, um, you know, who you expect to be looking at each section, so that it, so that it at least goes there. And as far as enforcement, I think enforcement is you and me and the other people in, in the town, uh, who read these things and come to the various boards and say, hey, you know, this, this ought to be, uh, consistent with the master plan, or this doesn't sound like it is. Because I don't think you can set up a czar to deal with it, I think it, it falls down to an engaged public. If it's a, if it's a document that describes what we think the community is asking for, then the community has to stand up and remind our elected officials from time to time that, um, uh, it exists, and, uh, that their actions ought to be consistent with it.
Anyone else? So, um-
Do you want to make edits before we vote on this?
Is the only edit the seventeen? Shall have members as follows, instead of consist of seventeen members. Master Plan Committee shall-
Yeah, I think so.
Have the following membership, or something like that.
Members representing the following. We don't have a hard number.
Any other revisions? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, um, to create a master plan committee, um, as outlined in the draft, uh, document created by Pam that was amended this evening.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Mrs. Luttrell?
I'm sorry, I'm slow here. Um, should we add the, the Technology Committee?
Oh, yeah, we probably should.
Yeah, sure. So that would add a member, but it sounds like we have a volunteer for that one also tonight. Oh, so let's see, four members at large appointed by the planning board. Maybe that number's down to three. So, uh, that's under, uh, membership. It would be a new bullet that would say, one representative recommended by, or, yeah, recommended by the, uh, Technology Committee?
I would do that, and I, I would go for, for, for language that, that says, membership representing rather than a fixed number.
Oh, yeah, we're not fixing the number, we're getting rid of that.
Because, for example, you know, the Technology Committee has representatives from the library and the selectmen and, and others, so you may be able to shrink this to something, you know, where you can actually get agreement.
Right. I think Mr. Mills covered that earlier, that one person could represent more than one of these groups.
And just, and I think worded in a way, too, that if one committee doesn't have a quorum to even vote a member to be part of this, then, you know, we can still go forward without, say, a representative from that board. So however you want to word it, but, does that make sense, Pam?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Motion's been made. Mrs. Luttrell.
Do we want to require four members at large or up to four in case we can't get four? And did the last Steering Committee have two members of the Board of Selectmen? Or was it just one?
Well, this is a bigger selectman board.
You think we'll get two?
Well, if we got one before, we should be able to get two now.
It, according to the acknowledgements, there was one Board of Selectmen member at the time. That was, um...
Yeah, that would make sense because there would be a quorum.
So any number above one would be changed to up to, up to that number?
That's a fixed number.
Any more questions or comments? Motion's been made. All in favor, four to zero. So we've voted to create the Master Plan Committee. Once this is revised reflecting what we said tonight, I'll, I'll come in and sign it and bring it down and have the town clerk stamp it, right? Carina?
Correct.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Economic Development Committee Proposed Zoning Amendment. That's the town planner to update us on this one.
I was almost ready for that one. So at a prior Planning Board meeting, this discussion was also on the agenda. And, um, EDC members were here from the committee and the Planning Board and discussed various approaches, impacts, pros and cons of the bylaw changes that the EDC were proposing for the Business Village District regarding residential dwellings, condos, apartments and such being added to the Business Village District. And there was discussion of how that would impact the other villages and whether an overlay district would be appropriate, how changing one aspect of the bylaw might trickle down and impact several other sections. So at the end of that discussion, at that Planning Board meeting, the members had tasked me to send correspondence to the Economic Development Committee through Claire Reynolds, the coordinator right now, to say that at its meeting on November 19th, the Planning Board discussed the EDC's proposed zoning amendment to Section 174 8.4B regarding the Business Village District and the addition of the language for residential dwelling units, condos or apartments. And during that meeting, since the EDC had indicated working on this more and towards a future town meeting, the Planning Board members felt it was, it may be best that it be incorporated into the master plan review as either its own topic, definitely as a major bullet point to be discussed during the whole master plan process so that it could be, you know, vetted across the board. And so that the town could absorb the information and weigh in on the option of how to look at it, including the proposed change or not for the upcoming review of the master plan. And then proceed with the vis- revisions of the bylaw following that whole process. And it was indicated that this would likely add more weight at town meeting for the proposed bylaw amendments, having gone through that whole process of public input, having been before committee representatives and boards and commission representatives. So that's generally the memo that I sent out. And, um, in talking to Claire during the work week, she indicated that there was a little bit of apprehension on that feedback from the Planning Board and that, um, you know, the goal for the EDC was more short-term, that there was a focus more for perhaps a special town meeting in the fall of 2019. So, you know, I understood that concern. So I had included this on the agenda again and had Claire give the EDC notification to come and express some feedback to that decision of the Planning Board last time. So that they could, so we could get it out on the table so that we don't get stalled one way or another, more forward. So that's why we're here. It's, um, in response to the Planning Board's opinion. That's what I have.
Anyone on the board? Mr. Mills, Mr. Jenks, Mrs. Luttrell?
I think I agree at this point because if we get together all these stakeholders and have conversations on where we want to go in the future and with zoning, I think it'll solve a lot of the challenges that we're facing now. I know the, um, EDC had a study done of the downtown area. And, and that study named as one of the challenges is the lack of a shared vision among stakeholders of how, um, to accomplish, um, goals in the, in the downtown. And evidently from the people that the consultant talked to, they were two very divergent points of view. And I don't think that's the way to go into a, a zoning change is if there's already two divergent points of view.
This, I, I see the memo now before us as very different from the earlier memo, which I think was a recommendation of implementing something to more clearly allow mixed use, including apartment or residential units. This sounds more like establishing some goals for the downtown area. Have you switched your approach on that or?
Would you like me to respond? Okay.
Somebody, yeah.
Sure. And, and so the, the genesis of this, obviously, we had talked about the, the issue of, of mixed use with apartments and apartments upstairs or living dwellings upstairs and commercial space on a bottom floor. It's something that the EDC supports, that our survey shows the town supports that the master plan and the ULI report all supported. And obviously this came up in a certain instance. And there was some controversy over whether it was actually allowed to have that, that type of mixed use. So discussing with, um, you know, I, I spoke with some people who, some stakeholders in town who were interested in this topic, who, who, who said, you know, they, they were concerned about how the two Main Street project may have been going forward. And because of, it wasn't clear that, that the use was, um, that because they were, there was no by right use for mixed use dwelling and commercial. So the EDC thought, well, okay, maybe we can fix this, you know, by discussing with the Planning Board a proposed change that would specifically allow that use because the mixed use of residential and commercial was so strongly supported. It was supported, you know, by the master plan and are very strongly supported by our survey and by the ULI report. So we thought maybe if we just add this mixed use residential to the by right zoning, maybe that would fix the problem. Speaking to a few other people, you know, that seemed like the right thing to do. I thought that'd be something that was potentially a relatively simple fix. I understand zoning is incredibly complex. That would solve for a particular issue in the downtown area. And when we, when Mimi very nicely came to our, our meeting last time, we discussed that. And, um, and when it was discussed previously at the Planning Board, the issue came up that, you know, it shouldn't be done in this narrow context. It should be done in a bit of a broader context. We shouldn't just add apartment as a, as a by right mixed use. We needed to widen the scope of it because that's going to affect potentially different definitions and could get convoluted. And we wanted to make sure, obviously, it was done correctly. So that, that's kind of the background. So our goal hasn't changed, but what came out of our, what I thought was a very productive discussion with Mimi at the EDC's last meeting was that, you know, was that we needed to take, um, our, what, what came out of that, what our goal was, was that we would look at the ZAC. And I, I understand now we're talking about the bigger master plan. And I think this is where I'm getting a little bit lost is because, you know, from my understanding, and like I said, I was not involved in the ZAC, but my understanding was that the ZAC lasted an incredibly long time, was incredibly expensive for the town. And there were certain, obviously, it didn't go through and wasn't implemented. But we, but the, I thought the consensus was, why reinvent the wheel? Let's solve for the EDC's narrow issue by taking a non-controversial piece of the ZAC that everybody who was participating in the ZAC said the, the downtown Business Village District zoning was not a controversial piece. Revisit this narrow issue, narrow in scope even further to only encompass Main Street versus all of the villages and accomplish something as kind of a, something that we can be done easily and quickly. My concern, and like I said, I fully support an attempt to revisit the master plan. I'm happy to support that, even potentially being involved with the committee if, if possible. But my concern is that this narrow issue is going to get lost in a bigger shuffle. And this something that could be, when Mimi was at our meeting, we talked about potentially the goal of bringing this to a special town meeting in the fall. I know there's been some discussion about making a fall town meeting part of our permanent cycle. And that was, that was sort of the goal we discussed. Obviously, not everything happens like that, but, but we felt like it was something narrow and accomplishable, that could be a win for us and for the town. So I, I, I just wanted to, I don't know that, from my perspective, I don't know that the best plan of action is to converge all those and have that get, that narrow piece of one little fraction of the ZAC get swept up in the bigger master plan. I also don't fully support completely reinventing the wheel when so much work was put into the ZAC, so much time, blood, sweat and tears and money was put into the ZAC. And, and, and if we have something that's been so thoroughly vetted and researched, from my understanding, there were many, many, many public forums. Sure, we can't just go vote on it, but let's start with that and revisit that narrow scope and see if we can do something, you know, on an expedited basis. Or at least not a long, long-term basis.
I'm, I'm sorry, but that really confuses me. My, I, what I was asking, I guess, is what is the goal of EDC? And, and can you make it short?
The goal was to establish mixed use zoning, permit mixed use zoning downtown.
Good. Was or is?
Is.
Is. Thank you.
That was really short.
I aim to please.
Anyone else?
No, I, I mean, I think my opinion really hasn't changed. I, I understand that you want to have a narrow focus on one specific piece. You say Main Street, but I think it, it quickly gets broadened with any property that goes on to a different street that might abut Main Street. And then as soon as, you know, if we just focus on that and then you have people in, say, who have property in Corterville who say, well, if you do it up there, why can't we do it down there? And then they start arguing that perspective. And if it's not thought out and worded in a way that it's strictly defined as to what that mixed use is, then you have a lawyer coming in and saying, well, this can be interpreted that way. So, um, you know, I, it was, I, I strongly feel that it would be beneficial for the town to go through with this, since we're going through the master plan review, to relook at that and not just focus on one little strip, but say, okay, if we really want this, let's look at it holistically for the town. And if we do want it, where do we want it? So it doesn't look like we're serving a special project. That's my position.
Well, I agree with what's being said. However, if we had done the ma- if we had updated the master plan two years ago and it had something in there about mixed use, but we didn't change the zoning code. So would we wait another eight, 10 years to review that in the next master plan update before we implemented or tried to implement mixed use? So it's coincidental that the desire to change the code to allow mixed use is happening at the same time that we're trying to change the master plan. So if you think about it, tonight, we created the committee. And if it goes like it, it, it's gone for the previous update. It takes about a year, might take a lot less if, if the amount of, and the complexity of the revisions aren't that great. But by next spring, we should have quite a bit more information and feedback on the status of the current master plan and the degree to which it need, would need to be updated. So if there's talk about a fall 2019 special town meeting, you'd probably, you'd have to have your proposed warrant articles in by August, probably if it would be a November meeting. So that's, that's quite a bit of time between now and then for the master plan work to get going. And quite a bit of time for a concurrent review of what might be done for the mixed use. So I think I said this before, that it should be kind of like a, a parallel track time-wise, but not stovepipe so that one isn't talking to the other. But I would encourage, um, full speed ahead on both, both fronts and see where they go. And if, if by next spring, next summer, it looks like, uh, the mixed use can be accomplished by a vote in the fall and it's not inconsistent with the master plan, then let's, let's, let's do it. So I hope that the message to the EDC wasn't to forget about it until the master plan. And if that's the way it went down, then I, I would encourage to change that to no. Keep going. Let's keep, let's keep trying. Let's find, let's find a way to bring it to a, a vote next fall. And, um, hopefully it'll be concurrent, consistent with and supported by a master plan. I'll move on to the next agenda item if there's no more questions or comments.
Chris Robbins, 39, Parkerville wrote, "I appreciate the support of the board here and what you're doing. And I hope that the word 'speed' is in the lexicon of words that we're using when you say this summer and this fall. Is that realistic for the master plan to be done and is that a commitment?" Is that realistic for the master plan to be done, and is that a commitment that you're making, that will be done by then?"
No, I think what I said, Chris, was that in, in the next six to nine months, there should be considerable progress made on the master plan update. And if that, and, and it's possible that it would be completely updated and, and ratified by the, by the board by next summer. It's also possible that through the process, we find out that it's going to take a couple of years, but we'll be a lot deeper into it than we are now. And so if at, if at a point in the spring or the summer, we'll have a lot more knowledge about which way the master plan is going, and we'll also have, hopefully, more knowledge and information relative to a change in the code to allow the mixed use.
Well, we support the update of the, I support certainly this update, but I think it's a challenge for us to get things done at a timely basis, and I encourage the board to garner the support that's going to bring a thorough but speedy process, so that can, we can move forward before everybody forgets why we started. We don't have a great track record in this town for getting things done, and I'd like to see a new model and standard where we can collaborate at a level that the town has not seen before. And I think of the ZAC's five-year enduring efforts to grade it. I think we're one of the only towns that does not have an updated zoning bylaw, and I think this is the chance to demonstrate that we can exceed the standard and create the best possible effort possible that will bring us forward in a prompt way, and we certainly support every effort that you make to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil? No? Okay, well, thanks for the input, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is other business properly before the board, the Planner's Report.
Julie, thanks for making it here. Chris, too. I know you, it's a challenge for you. Okay. Okay. Are we ready for the Planner's Report? Okay. Couple of things I just want to mention up front. In listening to some of our videos, it helps, and I notice I'm one of the biggest offenders, is to speak loudly and into the microphones, and it's good that we remind the public, because looking back, sometimes it's difficult to understand some of the things that are being said. There is closed caption, which is super helpful, but it's not always, the words don't always match verbatim. So just a little tip, I noticed, if we can all speak up and into the-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wise guy. Okay. I already mentioned about the interim building inspector. You should know that Karen Finelli is also moving on. She's, works with the Building Department in December. She's had an opportunity, so you might want to wish her well. Okay, first item for Planner's Report, 118-120 Turnpike Road. The Carol Enterprises attorney had asked Town Council to opine on some supplemental information regarding Section 174-5D, which is when a zoning line crosses your property, how much you can expand into the more restricted area. And Town Council prepared a response, which I forwarded to the Planning Board members, and I wanted to know if at this time, you've all had a chance to look at it, and if Town Council can release that opinion to the applicant's attorney, if you're comfortable with that. And-
Do you feel, do you remember that, and feel it's okay to release that? I do, but I wanted to have it by-
I'm comfortable.
Okay, so we'll release that to their attorney, and appreciate the extra effort by the town, our Town Council.
Okay. Thank you. I'll report back to him. At the last, over the prior couple of meetings, Sam Stivers was appointed to the Public Works Planning Board by the Planning Board here. Happy to say that notice was given to the town clerk, and he's been sworn in, so he's all set. I'm also happy to say that right around this time last Friday, the Planning Board annual report was due, to be a draft copy for the yearly report that the town publishes, and Pam prepared the annual report and successfully delivered it the day before it was due, so we have that information done. It describes projects we've worked on, warrant articles that were worked on, and various information of things that the Planning Department and the Planning Board did throughout the year.
Are you going to circulate that to the board?
Was that circulated to the board? It hasn't, but we can forward that in an email. Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Fayetteville Hall, the bid was accepted. I'm not sure I mentioned that last time.
No.
Okay. John Deli Priscoli submitted a bid, I believe $24,000 range, and some other items that are required in the bid, and that bid was accepted. So I believe it was entailing an auction kind of use that would be held there, so he would develop it into some kind of older-style auction house. So, there's more on that, if you need to, on the Board of Selectmen's website. I think they have the bid out there.
Do we expect him to come before the Planning Board? Isn't he looking for an adaptive reuse special permit?
That's correct. Thank you for reminding me. That is true. During the Board of Selectmen presentation, it was mentioned that he would come before the Planning Board for the adaptive reuse of historic buildings that was implemented in the code a year and a half ago or so. So we can be expecting that. Public Safety Building, in prior meeting, I had mentioned about the solar canopies, and there was potential for additional canopies. There were no bids for that, so there's no, nothing coming down the road, any change. The original site plan is what is, is held right now.
The original site plan, did it call for 19 carports? Because I heard the Selectmen approved the carports to be put in. Am I incorrect on that?
I'll have to check. There were carports proposed on the northern end of the parking lot, of the building. I can't recall if there were carports near the golf clubhouse, that section, but I'll check and confirm. I, when I last spoke about this, I thought it was going to be a new canopy with solar panels on that, too, and it was the new canopy structure. So if it's 19, other ones on the northern end, that's still the same.
Thank you.
I'll check that. Check number of canopy spaces. We got, we received an email that I forwarded to the Planning Board members from Neil Aspacy from the Fire Department, just so you know, that he's seeking help in funding for the town's local hazard mitigation plan. It's a townwide roadmap identifying all potential hazard threats, natural, man-made, and technological, to Southbrow, and suggested mitigation steps to reduce damage, loss of life, and financial loss from the identified hazards. One had been done previously, but he's trying to come up with $4,500 to add to a grant by the MAPC to do that, update that study. So just, so everyone's aware. New Building Commissioner is to be appointed, let me see, I just want to make sure when, she'll be starting January 3rd of 2019. It's Laurie Lavole, and I believe she came from the town of Concord, was high recommendations, and so we're looking forward to working with her when she starts. We'll try and help her as much as we can to get acclimated when she calls the Planning Department, the Planning Board for help. There was an email from Open Space Preservation Commission's Chair, Freddie Gillespie, regarding a pollinators article, and saying that even though not specific to Southbrow, she appreciated the efforts that transpired during the 154, 156 Northborough Road project that addressed some of those features that she's been working on. And then, that's it. That's all I have this evening, if you have any questions.
Everyone good? Our next item on the agenda, it talks about, it just lists the next meeting is December 17th, and do you have the agenda for that one so far, the draft? What's that one consist of?
We do.
So it's the, a continued public hearing for Zero, Furman Ave., and then more on the master plan update, master plan discussion. Probably be on our, almost every agenda that we'll have, would be to talk about the master plan and, and the progress, or hopefully not, lack thereof. Okay.
Can I say we're expecting Beals and Thomas to make a submission, revised submission for Zero, Furman Ave. this week? So once that comes in, you'll be receiving the revised plan sets.
Very good. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, before I do that, I'd like to thank Mr. Stivers, since he's here, for getting appointed to the committee that we did last time-
Public Works.
-Public Works, and getting sworn in. Congratulations. Motion stands.
Second. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Any discussion, hearing, or all in favor, we're adjourned.